If you wish to speak to any item on the agenda or during the public comment portion of the meeting, please fill out a speaker card. Each person addressing the board shall have three minutes to complete his or her comments on each agenda item for which he or she has filled out a card. The Chair has the discretion to determine or alter the time limits on any agenda item. The Board of County Commissioners requests that speakers appearing under the Public Comments section of the agenda limit their comments or presentations to matters relating to county business that are within the Board's control, authority, and jurisdiction.
Well, good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, April 23 regular County Commission Meeting. You can do that again if you want. We'll have fun. Before we get started, I'd like to recognize two very special people that are here today. And of course, we have Representative Dixie Sansom, former Representative Dixie Sansom. And we'll talk about Dixie and pray for her in a minute. But we also have former Representative Ralph Popple. Ralph, where'd you go to? There you go. So, welcome, welcome. So, let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Please stand.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know, but I'll ask. Okay, we have Pastor Beau DeFrenna. Pastor, come on up. Lead us in the right direction today.
Yes. Well, thank you for that invitation, and it is a privilege to be able to come and just read a short passage of Scripture and then pray together. It's First Timothy, Chapter 2. Paul says, "First of all, then, I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for kings, and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. This is good, and it is pleasing in the sight of God, our Savior, who desires all people to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth; for there is one God, and there is one mediator between God and men, the Man, Christ Jesus, who gave Himself as a ransom for all which is the testimony given at the proper time." Let's pray together. Father, we do come before you this morning, the privilege that it is to pray and to gather like this publicly, we recognize that freedom and we thank you for it. And we just pray that you would, first of all, as Paul exhorts us to there, His desire is for Christians to pray for all people to know Christ, to be saved. And so, that's on our hearts this morning, and that's what I pray for even now. But Lord, I also just pray for the wisdom, the insight, the understanding that is needed from you to rightly govern, lead, serve this community in a way that is pleasing to you and is in harmony with your perfect will on the earth today. And so, we pray for that wisdom, for your oversight to be upon our commissioners today. And we just ask personally that all of us would come to know you more and more through your Son, the Lord Jesus Christ. It's in His name we pray. Amen. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like a motion for the minutes of, to approve the minutes of February 24 regular meeting. Motion by Commissioner Goodson, seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. Any discussion or changes? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying no. Resolution, I mean, the minutes are approved. Now, we go to the resolutions, awards, and presentations. And I think Commissioner Tobias, are you handling this first one?
I am Mr. Chair, and with your approval, I'd like to go ahead and read the first one.
Absolutely.
Thank you. This is a resolution honoring Brian Locke for his contributions to Brevard County during his many years of public service. Brian, if you want to come up here. Whereas Brian K. Locke has had a long and diverse career in serving his community, not only in his tenure in public service, but also through his church. And whereas Brian graduated from the Federal Bureau of Investigations National Academy in 1995, the same year he received a Bachelor's of Arts from the University of Central Florida. Whereas he began his long career in public service as a police officer for the West Melbourne Police Department in 1980. And whereas, within 10 years, Brian had risen to the rank of Chief of Police of the City of West Melbourne and, whereas Brian began his impactful career with Brevard County 12 years ago as a code enforcement officer, and whereas, due to his hard work, efficiency, and ability to inspire the trust of others, he was promoted to Code Enforcement Manager in 2016, a role in which he thrived. And whereas Brian transformed the Code Enforcement Division to the model it is today, a professional, well-trained organization designed to maximize the county's resources for the betterment of Brevard County. And whereas, he was able to accomplish this in part by leading by example and building a reputation among his coworkers as some one of deep integrity and keen moral compass. And whereas, Brian was promoted to Assistant Director of Brevard County Planning and Development in 2021. And whereas, Mr. Locke has mentored many employees in the time with the county and throughout his career, and viewing in them the same strong values he exudes while maintaining a sense of friendship and camaraderie. Whereas Brian's knowledge, experience, and quirky sense of humor will be greatly missed. However, his legacy in the organization will live on for many years to come through the knowledge and experience he has passed on to the many people he has touched during his incredible career with Brevard County. Now therefore be resolved, the Brevard County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes honors and thanks Brian Locke for his loyalty and service to the citizens of Brevard County and Brevard County Government, and expresses its wishes to the peaceful and enjoyable retirement. I'd like to, done ordered and adopted, assuming we've passed the 23rd day of April 2024, I'd like to make a motion for approval, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias, seconded by Commissioner Felton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. I guess we'd consider this a Locke change, huh?
Ah, I love it.
There you go.
Love it, love it, love it, love it.
All right.
Brian, you had one of the hardest jobs here when it comes to code enforcement. I doubt you got many kind phone calls or had to deal with.
Well, yeah, we, yeah, it's challenging for sure. But with the help of a lot of very dedicated coworkers and Tad especially, yeah, we're able to hopefully get most things resolved, you know, without major ado. Some, you know, do end up becoming more difficult and challenging, but we always try to do the best we can at getting things resolved, you know, the way they should be, so.
Well, we thank you for your service, and I ask this of everyone who's retiring. What's on the horizon for you as you?
Yeah, well, thanks. So, a lot of things actually. Want to do some traveling and want to do some additional work with my church and do some fishing and hunting. I love the outdoors, so want to do some more of that. But yeah, just enjoying life and helping, continuing, I love helping people, so whatever I'm doing, that's what I hope to be doing, is helping people, so.
We certainly need a servant's heart in code enforcement, so the fact that you have that good disposition, I think, is very, very important.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, can I just say a few scripted things here?
Absolutely.
And probably the most nervous guy in the room besides me right now is Tad, because I've got the mic and I've, while I could share some stories about Tad, most of them would be made up, but anyway, so no, he's awesome. So, thank you very much. This is truly humbling and honoring, so I appreciate this very, very much. As some of you may know, my last retirement was not so much fun. So, this is certainly very much appreciated, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. So, I wanted to give some credit, and I won't give enough credit, but to some people, and I won't, I'll try not to name, start naming a lot of names, because then I'll get in trouble as well. But first and foremost, I do thank the good Lord, because He's blessed me. And also want to thank, let's see, my bride and best friend for 42 awesome years, Vicki. She's in the back. I want to thank Frank, and John, and Jim, and all those department heads that have helped me and supported me. And again, Tad for being the best boss I've ever had. He truly is a man of integrity, leads by example, and is exceedingly wise. I've heard it said a lot of times along the way that he is a wise guy, and so I come to believe.
Ba da dum bum. There you go.
That's that quirky sense of humor.
There you go.
Yeah, so, but anyway, he's an awesome leader, servant leader, and there's none better. He pours himself into developing solutions to very difficult situations, and he tries for win-win every time. Also want to thank Billy. He is a rock star, and he's really awesome. But again, we have, I don't know, probably 75 employees in Planning and Development, and I'd say 74 of the 75 are rock stars. I'm not going to name the 75th one, but no, they, you all have an awesome group, not just in Planning and Development, but across the board. And so, Brevard staff is in good hands, and again, I appreciate all the support and the trust that I've been bestowed with, and it's been an honor and a pleasure. Blessings and happy trails.
Well, we thank you, Brian. Hold on, I think we need pictures. Yeah. Hold on there, Brian, if you would, please. I would say Tad's by the pole back then, but I had to make him a tad pole. Ba da dum bum. All right, we got a contest going, Brian.
You are winning.
Well, we could, you want to get the, you want to get the whole group up here, Commissioner?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, that's all right. Anybody from Planning and zoning, come on up, please. Billy, anybody else, please? There you go. We need you all up here to show your appreciation for his work. Gives us an opportunity to also thank you guys and ladies for what you do. Mrs. Locke, where are you? Come on. You down here already? Is this her? Is that? We got, we got Mrs. Locke coming in. Thank you once again, Brian. I believe you're up again, Commissioner Tobias, on Child Abuse Prevention Month for April, or is that you? Okay, then. Excuse me, we've got Commissioner Pritchett.
Do we have Ms. Jessica Miles here?
Good morning.
Ms. Jessica, I'm going to read this, and if you want to say a few words, that would be wonderful. And I think you have some people joining? Whereas Florida's bright future depends on our healthy development of its children, and adverse childhood experiences, including the abuse and neglect of children, can cause severe and costly consequences for the children, families, and society as a whole. And every child has a right to safe, healthy, and a happy childhood where they are educationally and developmentally on track. Whereas research shows that parents and caregivers who have support systems and know how to seek help in times of trouble are more resilient and better able to provide safe environments and nurturing experiences for their children. Whereas during the month of April, prevent child abuse of Florida, in collaboration with the Governor's Office of Adoption and Child Protection, the Florida Department of Children and Families, ounce of prevention fund of Florida, and the Child Abuse Prevention Task Force of Brevard implements pinwills for prevention. The blue and silver pinwheel symbolizes the health and happiness that all children do deserve. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby designate April 24 as Child Prevention Month. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll second.
So, motion on the floor by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Felton. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Thank you so much. Again, every year, you know, we appreciate the support that declaring April Child Abuse Prevention Month allows us to think about our children here in Brevard, think about what they're going through, how can we help? Everyone can help prevent child abuse, just be aware. And that's, it's as simple as that. You can cook a dinner, you can do anything for a family that you feel may have a need. And so, our dedication, you know, Captive is a big group of collaboration with GALs, different child abuse prevention agencies around Brevard County. And so, we are, you know, fighting tirelessly to eradicate child abuse out of Brevard County, and that's really our goal, and we thank you so much for the support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Thank you so much. I think next month should be Commissioner Abuse Month.
(Laughter).
There you go. I just want one of these, please. One more, that would be good. I can give them to a few of our folks. Never mind, I'll be quiet now. All right, who's handling this next one? You are again. Good, Commissioner Pritchett.
I have Mr. Joe Steckler here. Is that you, sir? We're so honored that you're here today. I'm going to read this, and if you would like to say a few words, we would certainly love to hear from you, sir. Whereas it is the desire of Brevard County Board of County Commissioners and the Brevard Commission on Aging to celebrate the contributions of our elder citizens in strengthening and the prosperity of Brevard County. Brevard County represents the 19th largest elder population in Florida, and approximately 25% of Brevard's county total population is 65 years of age or older. And therefore, we join with citizens across the United States in promotion of the National Administration on Aging theme of Powered by Connection. And whereas, in keeping with this national theme, we recognize Joe Steckler, local veteran and founder of the Brevard's Alzheimer Foundation, as well as the president of Helping Seniors of Brevard, for his example of positive aspects of growing older in Brevard County, and by his example, remains engaged and successful in his community. We applaud his work to combat ageism and engage with his fellow citizens throughout this whole county. Now therefore, County Commission, we would like to make a motion that it's resolved that we hereby proclaim May 2024 as Older Americans Month. I make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. There's a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Felton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Mr. Steckler, would you? Oh, hi, how are you? We haven't seen you for about a year.
Yes, right, exactly. I'll have to start coming more often. Well, again, my name is John Potomsky, and I have the pleasure and honor of serving as Chairman of the Brevard County Commission on Aging. And we are here today to honor one of Brevard's outstanding citizens in recognition of Older Americans Month in May. Currently, as Commissioner Pritchett said, 25% of Brevard's population is over the age of 60. This is more than the population of those people under the age of 18. And yet, the people under the age of 18 rightfully receive greater county funding than our senior citizens. Many of our seniors have worked many years and paid taxes, however, almost every month at our BCOA meeting, we hear from seniors who come literally crying to inform us that they can either not pay for skyrocketing rent, or the food pantries have run out of food, or that they can't afford their medication, and often, some of them, all three. In the Bible, some of our Lord's disciples asked Him, "Lord, when did we feed you? When did we shelter you? When did we take care of you?" Our Lord replied, "Whenever you did these things for the least of my brethren, you did it for me." The needs of many less fortunate seniors has increased over the last several years, and they cannot make it on social security alone, especially when some receive only $900 a month. Formerly, the county had allotted $500,000 a year for CBO funding, which has been eliminated. Many groups, including Meals on Wheels, are now facing a deficit and are having to reduce the number of people they serve due to rising costs and decreased funding. I'm a conservative, but being a conservative should mean more than just financially. As George H.W. Bush once stated, "I am a conservative, but a compassionate conservative." I guess that the commission might consider in their funding deliberations. Well, today, we are honoring a man who not only served our country as a captain in the U.S. Navy, but upon retiring to Brevard County, he saw a need to serve our seniors. He first founded the Alzheimer's Association and developed three locations throughout the county, now known as Joe's Club, to serve seniors with dementia. After that, he accomplished the realization that seniors who don't have dementia also have needs, and he formed Helping Seniors of Brevard. And at the age of 90, the young age of 90, he still works to help meet the needs of our seniors. So, without further ado, it's my esteemed pleasure to present to you Captain Joe Steckler.
Being tied to this wheelchair doesn't help a whole heck of a lot, but I'll get around that. I'm working in therapy right now to try to get back to walking, and I'm going to do it. But, you know, I participated in a United Way study in 1992, and we came up with 19 needs of people in Brevard County. Nine of those needs directly affected seniors. We have been working to resolve those issues since 1992, and not a whole heck of a lot of progress has been made. One of the biggest problems is making the people in charge aware of what can... of what can be done, and the need to have a good plan in place to solve the problems in the future. I won't give up on that, not until I die. But I just want to thank the commissioners and all the commissioners before them that have helped us in Brevard County make people aware of the problems and then to resolve the problems. People like my own organization that are here today, John Potomsky and the Commission on Aging, Ian Goldman and the Housing and Human Services Staff of your own organization. All these people need to come together and work for a common good. That's the only way we'll ever, ever solve the problem. So I just want to thank everyone that has helped us. I didn't get any of this recognition by myself. It took a lot of people working with me and for me to make it happen. So I just want to thank all of you, everyone, the county, my own people, and just the people that have contributed to helping us make these things come together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you very much. All right, Commissioner Feltonner, resolution acknowledging a day of prayer in Brevard County.
Okay, we have Ms. Loretta Dozier and her group here today.
Come on down.
Thank you.
Are we supposed to hold up these now?
Not yet. You can hold up the bracelets.
Okay, the bracelets.
This one.
I've just been waiting to play with this, that's all.
Okay, I'll read your resolution.
Yes, sir.
And we'll pass it, and then you'll be invited to make some comments, and then we'll take a picture.
Yes, sir.
Dave Prayer in Brevard County. Whereas civic leaders and national days of prayer have long and venerable history in our constitutional republic dating back to the first Continental Congress in 1775. And whereas the Declaration of Independence, our first statement as Americans of national purpose and identity, made the laws of nature and nature's God the foundation of our United States of America and asserted that people have inalienable rights that are God-given. And whereas the Supreme Court has affirmed the right of state legislatures to open their sessions with prayer, and the Supreme Court and the U.S. Congress themselves began each day with prayer. And whereas in 1988, legislation setting aside the first Thursday in May in each year as a national day of prayer was passed unanimously by both houses of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan. And whereas the national day of prayer is an opportunity for Americans of all faiths to join in united prayer to acknowledge our dependence on God, to give thanks for blessings received, to request healing for wounds endured, and to ask God to guide our leaders and bring wholeness to the United States and her citizens. And whereas it is fitting and proper to give thanks to God by observing a day of prayer in Brevard County when all may acknowledge our blessings and express gratitude for them while recognizing the need for strengthening religious and moral values in our state and nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim Thursday, May 2nd, 2024, to be designated as a day of prayer in Brevard County, and encourage the citizens to observe the day in ways appropriate to its importance and significance. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 23rd day of April, 2024. With that, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Chair, a second, please. Commissioner Feltonner made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Loretta?
Yes, sir. Good morning to the commissioners. Thank you for your service and all your years. You have been leaders over Brevard County. You all have approved or given the committee the National Day of Prayer proclamation since 2016. So you are to be applauded for that, that you're not ashamed to declare in Brevard County and make, and share, and let the people know that it is a day of prayer. And so we thank you, and we appreciate you. The theme this year for the National Day of Prayer is lift up the word and light up the world. Lift up Jesus, because he's the answer to every situation problem. What you all are doing, it's Jesus. By the way, so I'm Loretta. I'm the founder and president of Dove Bible Club, which is an after-school club that shares the gospel, the death, the burial, and the resurrection of Jesus Christ with students in schools. So we're in 43 schools, and we get to share and have fun, and our students get to learn about Jesus. And they get to pray for you. But I'm also the county coordinator for the National Day of Prayer Task Force, and we get, and their goal is to mobilize unified public prayer for America and its leaders. And that's why we're here this morning. We wanted you to see and know that, guess what? You're being prayed for by so many people! And so I will, we have, you have your brochure from the National Day of Prayer. You have a bracelet from Dove Bible Club. And then you have a program of all of the prayer observances throughout Brevard County. Pass it to me. And then I would like you to see and know these names. So we're going to ask everybody to introduce themselves. And yes, yes, just say your name. They're praying for you all. We're praying for this county. So thank you again for your service to Brevard County. Pass it to me.
By the blessing of the upright, the city is exalted. You have brought a blessing over the county. Look at what God has done for our county over these years. He has really blessed us, and we just thank God that you would take a stand and allow this great blessing to come over our county. But there are over 50 prayer sites throughout the county, in churches, businesses, government centers, just schools, flagpoles, different language groups, about four or five different language groups. If you would just take a good look at your brochure, you'll see how diverse all of this is and what a blessing it is.
Amen. So let's just, just call, give us your name. I want you to be acknowledged. You're praying for them. They need to see your faces and know what you're doing. Come, Ms. T, just say your name.
Linda Taylor.
And where are you from? New Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church in Melbourne.
In Melbourne.
Yes.
Ma'am?
John Keane, and we have a house church, Acts 2 Ministries.
Okay.
Carmen Keane, I'm with him, Acts 2 Ministries.
Kristy Stewart with Loving, Love in the Name of Christ.
We'll do it together.
Evelyn and Richard Cologne, we're from Community Gospel Truth and Dove Bible Club.
Same with me, Edie, Community Gospel Truth and Dove Bible Club. David to Dove.
Sister Yvette Oliver, Love Center Church, Melbourne.
Clinton Branch, Coco First Assembly. Coco, come visit us.
The Mission Church in Palm Bay. My name is Margaret Irwin.
Mike and Margie Kinslow, school prayer teams for the Brevard Public Schools.
Good morning. Amanda Hernandez, I'm founder of We Pray Brevard and also the coordinator for the Space Coast Prayer Breakfast, which will be held on National Day of Prayer.
Brother Ed from the Mission Church in Palm Bay.
Hello, I'm Carrie Fink, and I try to help Dove Bible Club and also the Space Coast Prayer Breakfast.
And that's it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And Pastor Mark, Pastor Mark didn't get to, from the Mission Church, my pastor.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, it looks like we have Commissioner Tobias handling this next one, correct?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and read the resolution on behalf of the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners proclaiming May 2024 a stroke awareness month. And before a board may decide to vote no on this one, I want to disclose I got a call from Dr. Christine Zonka thanking me for presenting this. So whereas every 40 seconds, an individual in the United States has a stroke, and every 3 minutes and 14 seconds, someone dies of a stroke. And whereas strokes are one of the leading causes of serious long-term disability, the fifth leading cause of death in the United States, and the total annual healthcare costs related to strokes are expected to reach, I'm guessing this number is $240 billion, $700 million by 2030. And whereas nearly half of the adults in the United States have high blood pressure, which is a leading cause of controllable risk factors for stroke. And whereas during Stroke Awareness Month in May and all year round, Together to End Stroke Initiative of the American Stroke Association strives to teach people everywhere that stroke is largely preventable, treatable, and beatable. And whereas educating the public about B-E-F-A-S-T, B-Fast, which stands for B, Balance or Disgnous, E, Eyes or Blurred Vision, F, Face Drooping, A, Arm Weakness, S, Speech Difficulty, and T, Time to Call 911, an acronym used to help detect warning signs and symptoms of a stroke and respond effectively. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim May 2024 a stroke awareness month. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobias, seconded by Commissioner Feltonner. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think we have one Ms. Mary Jo Allen and one Michael Sealy to speak about this.
That's right. Thank you very much. I'm Mike Sealy, president of the Health First Foundation, and I'm here with our chief of nursing operations, Mary Jo Allen. She represents all the nurses at Health First. And I just want to thank Commissioner Tobias for reading that resolution and the commission at large for approving that resolution. I don't have pinwheels, I don't have bracelets, and I don't actually have Loretta. I'd like to object to following that, those presentations. But what I can offer you is that in a lifesaving situation or a life-threatening situation, particularly like a stroke, you're going to receive great care at one of our facilities. And it is our honor and privilege to serve this community, this lovely community. And we're just thankful for this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Commissioner Tobias, you have the honor of doing the next one also, I believe.
Yes, and I think this is probably on behalf of the entire board up here. I was just probably one of many that reached out to Dixie over here. I've had the privilege of knowing Jerry since I ran for office in 2007. He graced my door many times on many different issues. He is truly an individual that jumped headfirst into the deep end in public service and never came up for a breath. He was, he had many facets in not only Brevard County but statewide, and his passing is a great loss. So with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and read the resolution.
Yes, yes, sir. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Whereas Jerry H. Sansom was born August 4th, 1947, the beginning of a life dedicated to civic engagement and service to the community. Great. And whereas Jerry completed the, an associate's degree from, at Pensacola Junior College, where he was also a member of the sailing team. And whereas Mr. Sansom went on to attend the elite and fantastic Florida State University, completing a bachelor's degree in marine science and also complete, competing on the sailing team. And whereas Jerry Sansom completed his formal education at the Florida Institute of Technologies with a master's degree in science education in 1972. Whereas upon the completion of his final degree, Mr. Sansom quickly dove into the career as a government affairs consultant. Whereas Mr. Sansom has worked in the capacity for many municipalities and government entities, including Cocoa Rockledge, Melbourne, Cape Canaveral, Malabar, Melbourne Beach, Winter Springs, the Canaveral Port Authority, and Titusville Cocoa Airport Authority. And whereas Jerry's service extended to private organizations, including Northrop Grumman Aerospace Services, ARC of Florida, Florida Aviation Aerospace Alliance, Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, S.E. SATS Lab Consortium, and the World City America Incorporated. And whereas Mr. Sansom's professional life included being the president of JHS Consultants and Partners in the Sansoms Group, the owner of a diversified marine service representation and research for marine interests, the owner of diversified yacht services, and a marine science and research instructor at Satellite Beach High School. And whereas Jerry Sansom was a lifelong proponent of fisheries and marine environments. And whereas this was embodied in the service as a commissioner representing Brevard County on the Florida Inland Navigation District Board, a member of the South Atlantic Fishery Management Council, more than 18 years of trustees at the Hub SeaWorld Research Institute, and more than 44 years as the executive director of the Organized Fishermen of Florida. And whereas Mr. Sansom's guiding principles and the capacity was to ensure all efforts were biologically sound. And whereas his impact effectiveness and accomplishments are shown by, and, by being recognized as a national fisherman highliner in 2022. And whereas Jerry's interest included sailing, flying, and motorcycles. And whereas Jerry Sansom and his wife spent five years living on a 32-foot catch with their three cats. And whereas Jerry is survived by Dixie Sansom, his wife, of more than 50 years. Now therefore be resolved that this, the board honors and appreciates the lifelong dedication of Jerry Sansom, both his efforts as a government consultant and his commitment to fisheries and marine life. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session on the 23rd day of April, 2024. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobias, seconded by Commissioner Feltonner. All in favor signify by saying aye. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Representatives Sant-Dixie, would you? Anyone else? Thank you for, thank you so much for being here. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners and representatives. This is a great honor, and on behalf of Brevard, which is our chosen home, Pensacola's hometown, but we chose to, to plant our roots here and to grow here, and this is where we will stay. This is an honor to be recognized by our county, as Jerry was recognized also by some of our cities. We've got a lot of good friends here who have become our family. And thank you all. Thank you very much. It's been an honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dixie.
Can we all go down?
Somebody else want to have a comment there before we go? Nope? Okay, let's get a great picture. Well, okay. Thank you so much for all of those wonderful resolutions. Does anybody in the commission want to pull anything on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to vote no without comment on F9.
Okay. Any other items that we need to discuss? Do I hear a motion, please?
Motion to approve the items.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Goodson, to pass the consent agenda with a no vote by Commissioner Tobias on item nine. Okay, let's go to, oh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thanks so much. All right, let's go to... I won?
G1.
G1. Who's going to handle this, please? Is that Jill? Are you handling it? Commissioner Tobias?
I, I can, it's mine, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, please, if you would.
This is the, the sex offender language. The board approved legislative intent and permission to advertise for this ordinance at the March 12th meeting. To remind the board, this amendment adds clarification to our code that an offender, predator, who's committed offense where the victim is a minor cannot work in a school, childcare facility, park playground, or other place where children regularly congregate. Definition of minor is located in Florida Statute 775.21. I'd like to thank the county attorney's office for their diligent work on this important legislation. If there's no discussion, and even if there is, the motion I will make is to adopt the attached ordinance amending Brevard County Code of Ordinance Section 74-102 titled Sexual Offenders and Sexual Predators. That is the short of it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Tobias. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias, seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Now Jill, I believe you're handling this next one. Is that correct?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. The mid-year budget supplement provides the opportunity to adjust the projected balance-forward budgets that were developed before the closeout of fiscal year 2023. And these adjustments are primarily associated with multi-year projects as well as capital equipment purchases that have long lead times. And the agenda and supporting documentation summarize the total change and also include the individual budget change requests. And staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Motion to approve, sir.
There's a motion on the floor to approve. Is there a second by Commissioner Tobias? Any discussion? Good work, Jill. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, the motion carries. Now, let me just, Peter, you can come sit up here if you'd like, wherever you may be, so you can be recognized in a minute. But just bear with me for a second because I think I need to read into the record some very important stuff. Oh, I'm sorry. We are? My eyes are off then. Okay, but go ahead and sit there, Peter. Board discussion authorization to commence negotiations with the city of Melbourne regarding property included but not limited to parcels. Who is handling that for us? Commissioner Tobias?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this item is to find out if the board agrees with this notion. If so, we can authorize the county manager and county attorney to start researching potential options and begin conversations with the city of Melbourne regarding the two pieces of land located on Sarno Road. I have spoken on my behalf, not the board's behalf of course, with Mayor Paul Alf, Paul Alfry, who also spoke on his behalf, not that of the board, to gauge his interest. He stated not only was he open to this idea, he was potentially extremely interested. This land swap could solve numerous issues facing both the county as well as the city. To enumerate some of those, the benefit to the city would, potential options for providing space, and even more space for the Providence Place Project. I've been informed that there potentially could be a fire training facility for the city of Melbourne. Some mutual benefits, it, to serve as a location potentially for the Renaissance Fair as well as future fairs for the city of Melbourne. And Melbourne can financially make up any difference in monetary value that would be placed in the solid waste trust would be a positive to Brevard County. So some options could include, but certainly are not limited to, land swap, land sale, or a long-term lease. To be clear, staff would have to come back to the board with any potential options. It would also, of course, need to go before the city of Melbourne to gauge the interest there. I'm more than willing to work with the county attorney's office or the county manager if the board prefers, and I, but I don't mind staying out of it, whatever the board would like. Lastly, before anyone cites conspiracy theories, I'd like to point out that this would be a mutual agreement between two government entities. There's no private benefit here, and the item would have a net zero cost for either municipality. In other words, if there was a land swap and one, one parcel was worth more than the other parcel, that difference would be made up in a financial concession, again going to waste management. One other thing that is pretty glaring and certainly needs to be brought to light is the county's purchase of this land for more than seven million dollars in 2001. Clearly, it is not worth that today. Records show, county records show, the market value at somewhere in the neighborhood of five-hundred-and-eighty thousand. I don't know how accurate it, that is, but it's certainly not worth the seven million dollars. None of us up here were on the board and, or involved in government, to the best of my knowledge at that time, so while we can look at that, we certainly can only speculate on, on the decisions made by those that went before us. A good example was, I made a wise decision in November 2021, and when, given the opportunity to purchase Rivian shares at the IPO price of seventy-eight dollars. I just looked up, today they're worth eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. Thankfully, I only have a hundred and seventy-five of them. If anyone's willing to offer me the seventy-eight dollars, I'm more than willing to sell them. However, the market dictates today they're worth eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. So it's just the decisions that were made in our past. I think we can take this and make this beneficial to everyone. Again, this is just giving authorization. In fact, the motion is to authorize the county manager and county attorney to commence negotiations with the city of Melbourne regarding properties included but not limited to, then the parcels 27362400509 and parcel 27362400801, and provide authority for the county manager to conduct necessary appraisals and report back to the board with any potential option. So no decisions would be made until there was some agreement between management. So that's the motion. I'm more than willing to answer any questions, but that's the basics of this potential land swap.
Let me get a discussion on this before I call Commissioner Goodson. Is there a second?
I think we should go to the cards first, and before we do that.
Okay. Commissioner Goodson?
Mr. Chair, real quick, I misspoke. I said, I apologize. I, I should have said solid waste. So I apologize. It's not waste management, solid waste. Again, I apologize.
Commissioner Goodson, do you have comments?
Do you wish them now? Or do you want to go to the cards? I don't care. I can, I'll have the same comment now or later.
Okay, well, let's go to the cards, and Peter, you're up. Why is, isn't he on this subject here?
Yeah, I've got, I have two of them in today.
All right, so do we have any cards for this item?
At sixty-seven years old, this is the most I've ever spoken to a commissioner, so.
You're going to speak on, on Agenda Item, I won right now?
Correct, yes.
Go ahead, sir.
I heard about this about a week or so ago. I was very excited to hear that. I spoke with the mayor of Melbourne. I think this is a great move on both of you. With the loss of Wickham Park for large, for a large venue and for large events, this would make a great site. I hope it goes forward, and I hope you guys are able to put something together. I think it'll be good for the whole community. That's my comments.
Okay. Sandra Sullivan?
Good morning, Sandra Sullivan. So this was actually purchased, according to the Agenda Item, this property as a stormwater pond. Just want to point out that this is a fifty-eight acre. If you count the wetland, the original parcel was sixty-eight acres, okay? So the parcel you're talking about swapping is that little tiny green one that's three acres for fifty-eight, possibly sixty-eight acres of, of land. Now, there is a cost to this because this land, if you go through Google Earth and you look at its use, it has been used for the O'Gally muck de-watering for a number of years. That was filled in quite recently. The, the issue with that is that, say, the lagoon meeting on Friday, they're going out to bid right now, it's going to cost the county to put a de-watering site on BV52 under the Florida Inland Water Navigational District. The swapped property is entirely on wetlands, the piece of three acres from Melbourne. So you're getting a, essentially a worthless piece of property. The question is, why would we need to swap when you could just sell? Now, it goes to, how was this property purchased? Was it purchased with a bond? And it is, it is as a dump designation. It is within your solid waste department, and in which case it would need to be appraised and sold for fair market value. I can send you the legal documents that you have pertaining to that. It is very, very much a red flag to me that in 2021, when the county wanted to use the site to extend Sarno, the city of Melbourne would not raise the height on Florida recyclers, but lo and behold, on tonight's meeting, related to the adjacent property, the Florida Recyclers property, who sold this to the county at a six-million-dollar profit, the property that we're talking about, but their property is getting a height being doubled from forty to eighty feet. This doesn't seem to add up, putting in a venue for a ren fair next to a dump that had consent orders for smell in 2021. That was in the news. Doesn't seem to add up. Apparently, this is only for a short-term thing until, as he prepares another location. And so, as you mentioned, this could be used for fire training, affordable housing. They could just resell it to Florida recyclers. This feels like a shell game. It stinks.
Okay, any more discussion on, Commissioner Goodson, you would like to make some comments with regards to this, sir?
Thank you, Chair. I don't see a need to do this, to swap fifty acres for three. If we proceed on this, and I would want staff to tell me, how are you going to develop the three to have any economic value on Sarno? You know, why not a long-term lease or a yearly lease? I think the county's, doesn't have the land and, running out of land, I'm sure it could be used for hurricane debris storage or processing that. You know, if you're going to sell it or trade it, then I definitely would want to know a value of that and the value of their land and what would be proposed. Can the county even do this? Because where did the money come from originally to buy it, Frank?
It was a solid waste.
Correct. Solid waste. So would it not, where's solid waste? Where's, where they're not at the table today?
Ultimately, solid waste would be the beneficiary financially of, of any either sale or exchange.
Okay. So you're going to give up fifty acres for somewhere around four-hundred-thousand dollars? Is that the difference? A hundred and fifty against five-eighty? I don't, I don't see it, and I don't want to see, I personally would not vote to have the staff waste their time, you know. Thank you.
Commissioner Felton, please.
I think the idea here, and I spoke with Mayor Alfry this weekend, also had a very good conversation, and they're excited about the prospect of Melbourne fairgrounds. The landfill is coming to the end of its useful life. It'll be capped, and so we, we'll still have this parcel. As Commissioner Tobias pointed out, none of us were here when that was purchased. I don't think I would have, you know, we, this board probably would have agreed to that purchase twenty years ago, but we have this parcel. It's remained unused during this time. And I think the best use for it now is for large events venue in Brevard County. It's not something that we necessarily want to do, but the city of Melbourne wants to do it. And so by giving them this parcel, they'll be able to do that, and that's why I'm going to support it today.
Is there any other discussion? Is there a second to Commissioner Tobias's motion?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Tobias, seconded by Commissioner Felton. Is there any addition or discussion that's going to happen now? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, now, let's go to I2, which is, Peter. Now, Peter, before you get up, let me read this to everybody in the audience so that we can get a clear understanding of where we are and what we're doing, because this is a very intricate situation. There's been a variety of things that have been legal situations that have happened. So to make it clear, I'm going to say this item is an appeal. It's different from our typical Agenda Item, so I'm going to take a moment to discuss the process. The Brevard Renaissance Fair requested a special event permit to be used in Wickham Park. The county denied the permit request. Brevard Renaissance Fair has exercised their right under county code to appeal to the Board of County Commission. That's what they're doing today. For this item, the board is sitting in an appellate capacity. That means we are here to determine if county staff and the county manager correctly followed the code when they denied the permit. We're not here to judge whether the Renaissance Fair is good or not good. Our job is to hear the appeal, decide whether staff made an error, and if so, decide how to correct that error. In a moment, I'm going to ask Mary Ellen Donner to come up from Brevard County Parks and Recreation to introduce this item. and Recreation to introduce this item. She will have up to 10 minutes to do so and to respond to any questions the board may have. After that, I will allow Peter, how do you pronounce that?
Molshausen.
Molshausen of Brevard Renaissance Fair, the same amount of time to present his case and answer questions. We will then take public comment on this item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes per person. Remember, this case is only whether the Brevard County Code was correctly applied to the permit request. If you love the Renaissance Fair, that's wonderful, but it's not relevant to the issue of whether or not the code has been applied properly. If you're opposed to the Renaissance Fair, that is fine, but once again, it's not particularly relevant to the issues of whether the code has been forwarded. We cannot change the code. Changing the code would require an ordinance, an advertisement, and additional public hearings. We cannot waive the code and allow it to event to proceed if doing so would violate the code. I ask speakers to keep these things in mind when making public comment today, and please limit your comments to matters that are relevant to the appeal. Now that everyone understands the rules and regulations, Mary Ellen Donner, where are you?
Right here, sir. Right here.
Oh, hi.
[laughing].
After you, Mary Ellen, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Ellen Donner, Brevard County Parks and Recreation Department Director. This is regarding the appeal for the Wickham Park usage denial. The Brevard Renaissance Fair submitted a special event questionnaire requesting the park use, Wickham Park, for their 2025 event. Included in it was the setup, the actual event, and the teardown. The requested use period runs from December 24, 2024, through March 7, 2025, a period of 74 days. I evaluated the request and determined that it does not meet the requirements of the Brevard County Code of Ordinances, Section 7882B1. And that part of the code states, beginning January 2025, special event permits at Wickham Park shall be limited to a maximum of 15 consecutive days or two consecutive weekends. Excluding the portion of the requested use for the December 2024, the request includes 65 consecutive days and seven consecutive weekends in the calendar year of 2025. The request exceeded the maximum allowed under the code by 50 days or seven weekends. Additionally, Section 7882B1 provides, beginning in January 2025, January, February, March, and April of each year shall have a minimum of one weekend free without special events at Wickham Park. If the requested permit was granted, the months of January and February 2025 would not have a minimum of the one weekend without a special event as required by code. Therefore, the permit was denied. The Brevard Renaissance Fair appealed the decision to the county manager. On March 21, 2024, the county manager issued his decision upholding the permit denial. Brevard Renaissance Fair has exercised their right under county code to appeal to the Board of County Commissioners. I am available for any questions the board may have.
Is there any questions of Ms. Donner? Did you fill out a card?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Why don't you come on up?
Ms. Steiner, what is the legitimate government purpose of this ordinance?
I'm not certain what's appropriate.
County attorney?
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is an appellate process. Mr. Molshausen will have 10 minutes to present his case. There's no cross-examination. This isn't an evidentiary proceeding. It's merely an appeal to determine if the code is properly applied.
Yes, but you cannot apply a code that's unconstitutional.
All right. Mr. Molshausen can make that case, but I'd suggest you take speaker cards after hearing Mr. Molshausen's case, please, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, Peter, come on up. You have 10 minutes.
I appreciate your time. I'm going to change my tune just a little bit. I was going to be real nice and friendly and everything, but we know which direction this is going. So I'm going to be quite honest with you. The attorney knows that we're going to end up in court on this one. I said we would fight it all the way to the end, and I meant we will fight it all the way to the end. But I'm going to tell you a little bit. Brevard Renaissance Fair, we've been there for 11 years. Nine years, we had a handshake agreement with the park to provide the dates for the following year during our event. As long as we were in compliance with the park, we understood that to be a contractual issue. You can deny that it is, but we understood that it was. We have followed those procedures along the way. You changed the rules last year in September. We found out in October. We have tried to move heaven and earth over the last several months to find a new location. Mr. Felton knows it. I've had several meetings with him and his staff, and I appreciate the work that we've been doing. We brought our employees in from all around the state to check out other parks. We were recommended to use a park on the 520. We spent two days out there measuring and laying everything out. It holds 160 cars. Not enough parking for our event. So there was no other place in Brevard. That's why I'm happy to see Mr. Tobias do what he's doing. I'm asking you to make, we have two sites that we're working on right now. Hopefully, the city of Melbourne site comes to fruition, but if not, we have 77 acres that we've been working our tails off on, clearing the pepper trees out, getting the property ready to hold the Renaissance Fair. And Mr. Felton and some of the other departments have offered to work with us to get that property approved if the Melbourne property doesn't come into place. What I'm asking for today is to stability. In case these two avenues don't come to fruition by January, that we have a fallback that we can use Wickham Park for the one year. That's it. That's all we're asking for. We don't want to be at Wickham Park. We've wanted our own land for several years. After meeting with Mr. Felton, zoning people, and several other people, and we talked about the 77 acres, we can get that done. It's going to take a lot of work, and hopefully, there's no obstacles along the way. But that's what I'm asking for, is if we're unable to get either one of those properties ready by January, that we can fall back. I don't think there's a business around that can shut down for two years and survive. So that's all I'm asking for, is by October, November, we'll know if we're going to open up in January on the new locations. If not, that we be somehow provided a way to use Wickham Park. Two weeks doesn't work. It takes us two weeks just to build our event, and it takes almost two weeks to tear it back down. Three days to build it, two days to tear it down is just an impossible task. And the cost to try to recuperate in two weekends is undoable. So that's all I'm asking for at this point. We have the two properties. I think one of them will come through, if not both of them. The 77 acres, we have another use for if the city of Melbourne does their property. I own a winery, and the winery will fit real nice there on that 77 acres. So we have another use for it if it doesn't become a Renaissance Fair site. All I'm asking for the commissioners, you made the change in September. I wish you'd have contacted us. I wish we'd have been at the table to talk about it. We weren't given that opportunity. We found out when we were in Sarasota putting on a Renaissance Fair. And as soon as we got back to Brevard, we jumped on it to try to find a new location. So all I'm asking the commissioners is, did they follow the guidelines? Yeah, more than likely. Do I want it to go to court? Not really, but I'm willing to do that if that needs to be done. So that's where I'll leave it at. And if you've got any questions, I'll gladly answer them.
Now, Morris?
Yes, sir.
I guess the commission asked questions of Peter at this particular point in time, is that correct?
You may do so if you wish.
All right, now, there's no questions that would be allowed from the audience, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So anybody on the commission have any questions for Peter? Hearing no questions, thank you very much, Peter. We're going to go to the cards and figure this out in a minute. All right, now, as I call you, you will have three minutes to come up and speak. Remember, please, what I've told you. This is a typical, this is a legal situation. All you can really talk about is the appeal. We're not here to debate whether Renaissance Fair is great, Renaissance Fair is not great. We're not here to be able to tell you that we're going to make a decision today, that we're going to give Peter what he'd like to do in his thing. We're here to only talk about what went on and whether it was done properly. So with that, I'm going to call Esther Cornelison, is that correct, up? All right, well, that doesn't. Is that?
I'm going to speak since I was.
Ma'am, ma'am, you can't speak from there. Please come up here if you're going to speak on this issue. We need to get it all on record. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was just saying that I was here to beg to please leave my park alone, and since we can't beg for that, I'm going to.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Good morning, Sandra Sullivan. So I was at, I just want to say, I was, I think there is an issue here, because I was at the meeting in September, and what was stated by the commissioners, this is a community park and not a regional park. And a community park is different in how it's used compared to a regional park, which is not the neighborhood's park as in a community park, and a regional park is broader use. And I'm just going to say this, that one of the resounding themes of me coming to this commission is about accountability and transparency. And the issue I had with this ordinance change is that the stakeholders, the people who rent and reserve that park for periods of time, were not informed. The only people, because I was sitting here in the audience, the only people that were weighed in are the community members. And so I don't think that this was handled correctly when you do a zoning change, for example, with the DMAA site, you know, with the new TUA, you know? You notify the people within 500 feet or 1,000 feet. You didn't notify the stakeholders. And so essentially, we have created a crisis for businesses because we failed to do a transition or, you know, even looking to how you're going to allow these businesses to continue to do well, and it serves a lot of customers in that area. In my opinion, this commission should go out and redo the ordinance and do it right this time with the people coming in, the stakeholders being informed and coming to the table, because you created this issue, and now you're going to make it a worse issue by selling off a piece of land. That deal, the fact that we don't even know how that land is going to be used as firefighting, affordable housing, rent fair, or what?
I believe you're on the wrong subject.
Anyway, so stay in on this issue. My request to this commission is revisit the ordinance, do proper notification to the stakeholders so they all come in and weigh to the table instead of a select few to get the result that you want.
Sir, I found that when you announced the relevance, my comments are no longer relevant.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity, though.
Thank you so much.
I believe you all did follow the ordinance procedures correctly, and I would also like for Peter to know that we do not want the Renaissance Fair there for another year. There's too much damage. The scrub jays are damaged. We ought to think about the flora and the fauna in that park. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. We appreciate you understanding that outside comments other than about what we're doing is really not needed, but thank you for coming up and saying what you've come up and said. Ginny Knoll?
I second her.
Okay, that's good.
Hi, good morning. I learned a long time ago, there's two kinds of politicians in this world. The one who believe and have a dreams, and the other ones who just make business or take advantage of the business, who their spot gave them. Yes, this situation was bad management. We don't even have a catching legacies. We don't follow, as Sandra said, the regular, you know, protocols we need to, for place an ordinance. And we are affecting many people. We need to fix this. We need to do the right thing. Daily, I walk in the park with Ms. Catty and Mr. David, and we have the same issues that Ren Fairs have, mud. Every time it rains, water is flooding the park. My sons go to soccer practice, and when it's rain, water and mud. And a lot of stuff there is going on in the Wickham Park. The playground doesn't have a regular bathroom. Imagine a little kiddos using a porta potty. We can do this in a better way. We can do this in a, we can say, mixture way. I'm pretty sure Mr. Peter is agreeing to fix maybe some of the problems that Wickham Park have. I'm pretty sure Park and Recreation won't fix those issues like reforestation. We have a fire the last year, you know, the fire in Wickham Park, and what's going on with that? That's happened because we have a bunch of trees there who are already dry, and we don't reforestate. We don't have a playground there, water issues, dog park, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Why? Why you expect that working and make a better Wickham Park to follow Mr. Wickham, you know, legacy, to leave something behind? We are here just for fight. Oh, you can use it? You cannot. You are breaking our ordinance? You don't. What's going on? And what happened with the people? We are the people. We deserve a better management, and all of you are doing a really, really poor work. Thank you.
Thank you, Francis. Before I call up the next name, please remember while we're here, this isn't a debate about what we need to do at Wickham Park. This isn't a debate about Renaissance Fair being good or not, and I understand you want to vent about those things in another meeting at another time. You can vent as much as you want if it's on the agenda. Please keep your comments in regards to whether county staff did this correctly or incorrectly. So Kathy Danner, please. Okay, thank you, Kathy. Okay, so it looks like we have all the cards here. So I guess we can call the question now, is that correct, Morris, in regards to this?
I think we need a motion.
Okay, well, I was just going to, yeah, thank you.
I just want to make sure, did the first speaker have a card and want to speak as opposed to questioning?
Yeah, I filled out a card. I'm not sure why you don't have it.
You could have filled it out under public comment instead of this item. So if, we're going to let you talk, okay? What is your name?
My name is Kevin Rutledge. I am a member of the Florida Bar.
All right, Kevin, go ahead and speak, and after you're finished, please walk back there and fill out a card, because we don't see it here, okay?
Well, first, I'd like to preface this by, the last time I was in here, I was actually sitting over there representing this room. I was sitting over there representing, helping assist a county and trying municipal ordinances. So the issue is, is I don't believe that the ordinance in question here would survive a rational basis test, because every purported legitimate government interest has been debunked. The city of Melbourne actually had a hearing about a month ago where they went through the arguments that the fair cut off access to the park, dog walks noise, and criminal violations, and it was shown that through the city of Melbourne And it was shown that through the court record, the city of Melbourne records, that there were no complaints about entered in the city of Melbourne, which would be the logical course to enter those complaints. Now, if those are not the logical basis, the rational basis or the legitimate government basis for this ordinance, what is? Now, we have a young lady over here who added flora and fauna, but we are talking about natural processes. There was nobody, that I observed there in my time at the Ren Fair going out and chasing scrub jays or interfering in the scrubs. It was the wet, grassy field that they use. So there's no real ecological harm going on. And if there was, we have no, as a government entity, there is no legitimate scientific study to prove that. Now, I've actually spent some time at the county attorney's office prior to Mr. Richardson taking over, and I implore the county commission, please seek outside counsel to review this ordinance. Because when I was over at the county, county attorney's office, there was a very strong culture of telling the commission what they wanted, not what was legal. Please look to outside counsel. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I have no concerns about the constitutionality of the ordinance.
Right, I, I understand. I appreciate it. Is there any discussion in regards to any of this stuff before someone makes a motion? And Commissioner Tobias?
So I moved up, hold the decision made by staff and county manager per Brevard County Code Section 78.82 and deny the appeal. That's a motion, Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobias, seconded by Commissioner Felton. Any other discussion in regards to this matter before we take a vote? Hearing, none. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Okay.
Can we take a five minute?
Yes, let's take a five minute break, please.[722.29]
Mary Ellen on the City of Cocoa Parks operation and maintenance, or is Jim?
Good morning, I am.
Good.
Yes.
You have the floor.
Thank you so much. Mary Ellen Donner, Brevard County Parks and Recreation Department Director. This before you is a request for action for an interlocal agreement with the City of Cocoa for park operations and maintenance. Brevard County actually operates and maintains eight parks in the City of Cocoa, which include two community centers, and since 2011, we have not had an agreement. And so this is asking the board to request that action to consider, number one, present the proposed interlocal agreement to the City of Cocoa for their approval by October 1st of this year, 2024. Second option would be if the city does not approve the interlocal agreement by July 31st of 2024, the county will notify the city that it will cease to maintain those parks in the City of Cocoa on October 1st. And any other direction that the board may provide would be appreciated.
Okay. Any questions? Your district, right Tom?
Yep.
Okay, you're good? Do I have a motion? I don't believe we have a card on this. No cards on this particular one, no sir? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Commissioner Goodson.
Okay. Mary Ellen told you it's been since 2011, okay? And we're in 2024. The taxes raised, the cost of the park is about 1.6, parks are about 1.6, Cocoa kicks in about $500,000. I don't want to hurt Cocoa, but I want everybody to come to the table and it be fair, okay? And if, you know, a response was given to me that they, we've been talking about this for eight months, 10 months, correct, Mary Ellen, with Cocoa?
I've been talking with the City of Cocoa since I got here.
Well, that's true, but I brought it up to them, correct, about eight or nine months ago?
Yes.
Okay. They wanted us, so you'll know, they wanted us to install a $1.5 million sewer line from Mo Stradley Park to Cocoa High School, okay? But they also charge you, meaning the county, they charge us for water and sewer. Thirty, somewhere around 25 to 30,000 a year for their own water, for their own parks. I find that totally confusing. Also, we maintained a park on Peachtree Street and Mary Ellen, or the county put in brand-new playground equipment, okay? Within a week, the City of Cocoa closes the park because of the drug activity. You know, there seems to be no coordination between us and them. Maybe this interlocal agreement will bring them closer to us, and we can work together to have good parks. But that's all I have to say. You know, I would like to see the board look at this with consideration of, you know, of, we have to fund parks in the city. And the other issue would be that upset, or kind of confuses me, they're going to say they don't have the money, but the other day they found $5 million to give to a private entity, meaning Bright Line. Okay? $5 million they found. The other day, there's comments, or at one board meeting, a $700,000 splash pad on 524 Juni Reno's Park. Well, if you know anything about a splash pad, it ain't the cost of the splash pad, it's the maintenance. And I definitely would not want to see us maintain a splash pad. Even though you can say all you want to about kids, 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 and I agree with that. But, you know, there's a certain amount of responsibility we have to have with our money, and if we're going to get beat up every time, I am not in agreement for that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got some slides up here, and I want to thank Commissioner Goodson for bringing this to the board's attention. I'm strongly in support of this item, but I'm going to do something I haven't done in...
Real quickly, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'd like to recognize that we do have the county manager from Cocoa here, Stockton Witten, and the mayor, Mayor Blake, so just wanted to let, say hello and let you know that they're in the room.
Super.
Thank you so much.
Man, won't change anything.
I know that, I understand that.
In fact, again, something I haven't done in seven years here. I am going to strongly support this, but I'm going to try to convince you to vote against this. And let me tell you why. Because we had a very similar thing come up, I don't know, two weeks ago when it came to lifeguards, and you voted no on that. So I want to point out the extreme similarities that are taking place between these very two extremely similar items. Number one, both of these are located in District 2, your district, the parks there, as well as Cocoa Beach, the largest beneficiary of the county's resources when it comes to lifeguards. Let's go to the second slide here. The exact same history that you pointed out. We've been maintaining these parks for 40 years, apparently, and I'm off a little bit. I guess we've been providing lifeguard services for just about 15 or 16 years. So we have a strong history of covering 100% of the cost, but same history there. So let's go into the negotiations of the ILA, which you've mentioned here, that we haven't had one for quite some time. Same thing when it comes to the negotiations of the lifeguard ILAs. We've met with them numerous times and always get turned down for any type of agreement. Here's where it gets too similar, it's almost scary. In your proposal, you asked for a 50% cost share. Ironically, I, at a previous meeting, asked for the exact same cost share, the 50% county, 50% municipality, again, exactly the same of which you voted no on. And then you pointed to the last one, the cities are crying poverty. And you pointed this out, I appreciate it, just cuts against the argument. The City of Cocoa Beach has claimed they didn't have enough money to help with this, but, you know, they're floating a golf course for a million and a half dollars. They're building numerous buildings, they're under all sorts of debt, you know, that they got themselves into with that stuff. You've got Cocoa here, and I agree with you, $5 million that is going there, splash pad, where that money comes from, but claiming poverty is something both of these organizations, or these cities are done. The similarities go on and on and on of these. So again, I'm strongly going to be supporting this because I think it's good policy, but for consistency's sake, unless there's a difference I'm missing here between the residents of Cocoa and the people that frequent the beach in Cocoa Beach, I don't think that there's a reason for you to vote in favor of this. So that's my argument.
I must say, that was one of the most interesting arguments I've ever heard.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I don't know if you're for or against it, Commissioner Tobias, which way are you? Because one, in one, you may, yes, I'm for it, and then no, I'm not.
Let me be very clear.
Very clear, please.
Very clear. I'm extremely consistent and have maintained consistency up here as a board. I believe that our municipalities need to cost share on these type of activities. I voted that way each and every time when it came to lifeguards. I opened this up with Commissioner Goodson. I think this is great policy. I wish we would have done this ages ago. I strongly support this. But you gave me many reasons why you voted against lifeguards, and those reasons are the exact same reasons up here, under the exact same structure when it comes to cost share history. So my argument is, for consistency's sake, it would most likely benefit you to be a thumbs down on this one.
Okay. One thing I can say about your consistency is I can't ever figure out what they, how you're going to vote, but thank you for your comments. But I will not, I will be for this, okay?
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett, yes, you may.
Ms. Mary Ellen, what percent is the City of Cocoa reimbursing the county for right now to maintain their parks?
So right now, we collect an administrative district for tax, and so there are specific taxes collected within the City of Cocoa, and that goes towards the maintaining of the parks. But specifically, Cocoa does not pay us to maintain their parks.
Okay, does the City of Titusville pay to maintain their parks?
It's the same premise. We collect taxes within the city.
So when we did the...
Yeah, what's the amount? It's about, what, 550,000, something like that?
So in 2023, we collected from the City of Cocoa 568,000, and we expended 1.6 million for a difference of 1.1 million dollars.
Okay, so a while ago, we did this analysis with Titusville, and we came back and found that they're pretty much paying for all of their...
That is correct.
Their parks, because we were going to look at, it's the time that we were talking about maybe moving parks back to the cities, and so, but they were able to cover that. And Titusville, North Brevard area, also did a special form of taxation to help support some of the extra park activities too, which might be a good thing for Cocoa to maybe to look at, but that's their business with that. So I think we need to get to the place to where, I'm guessing, Commissioner Goodson, this is a good motion, sir, to try to get the agreement done fairly soon. It's just appropriate. And the only other thing would be maybe to take the parks, but I know that's not something that's been very popular with this commission over the past. So you're going to give them a few more months, which is good, so I think it's good, so.
Commissioner Felton, do you have any comments? None, do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make the motion, Chair. If we approve this, receive fault.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any more discussion?
If I may, there were three options.
Can I?
Hold on, let me hear the options and then...
You want me to make a motion that includes all of the options?
Yes.
Okay. I move to authorize staff to present the proposed interlocal agreement to the City of Cocoa for their approval on, approval by October 1st, 2024. And if they do not approve by July 31st, 2024, do notify the city that it cease to maintain the City of Cocoa parks on October 1st, 2024. The county manager is authorized to make any necessary budget change requests. I think that effectuates all of the requested...
Okay. And there's a second to that, but, okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, now we're going to go to the approval of the Tourist Development Council Tourism Lagoon Grant Program Funding Guidelines Application and Score Sheet. We turn it over to you, Peter.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Yeah, this is a recommendation coming from the TDC recommending reinstatement of the Tourism and Lagoon Grant Program, maximum funding up to $500,000. Maximum per grant, $50,000, and all the accompanying guidelines, application, and score sheet.
Questions? Sandra Sullivan, you want to come up and speak on this issue? Got a card here.
The lights not working.
The lights aren't working, I apologize.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores, just a quick comment. So last season, comments were made after Hurricane Nicole that the beach fund was insolvent. And by the grace of God and the help from our congressman, that got fully funded this year, and it kind of breezed through a bit of a crisis through that support. But you can't always rely on that, to be fiscally conservative. I think that that beach fund needs to be rebuilt. The lagoon tax provides a lot of money to projects, and it seems redundant, given that there's a lot of other things in that section of the TDT tax under beaches. For example, even the acquisition of other parcels like Spro, Nexus Spro, and such. There are other uses that it could be put to. I'm just going to say this, you know, one of the objections I had in the past with the use of this tax was, for example, you may remember the seagrass controversy in putting, there's no seagrass in the Banana River, none, okay? And where did we put the first seagrass project? It's Sally Beach, where there's no seagrass, and where we have the worst water quality, and we didn't know about it because it's in TDT, and most people don't look at TDT agendas. So I'm not too happy, we already have a lagoon tax. Let's spend this on tourist-related stuff. I mean, some of the monies that where this is going, I even question that it's for tourism, like seagrass.
Okay. Commissioner Tobias? Yeah, by the way, guys, the lights aren't working, that's why I've been...
Sorry.
No, it's my fault, I should have looked down that direction, I apologize.
Okay, this is going to be a little bit different from the recommendation. There's about 8 million in the, according to, according to the county staff, there's about 8 million in beach fund reserves. It may sound like a lot, however, a single storm can impact that. At best-case scenario, it's a nine-to-one match when we grab federal and state partners. At worst, it's a three-to-one match. So this is highly leveraged money, even in short term. In 2022, the beach fund had insufficient funds to cover the damage from two storms that impacted the county. The use of 8.4 million in ARPA funds was necessary to cover the costs of said repair. Even without a storm, beach maintenance projects can be in the millions. And by the way, even storms that happen offshore that don't impact us can greatly impact this. The TDC lagoon grants were a regular funding source for derelict vessel removal by Natural Resources. There are other funding sources, and they are highly competitive. So I went back, 2019, 2020, 72 vessels were removed that had cost 112 of this fund. 2021, 2022, 36 vessels at 49,900. And 2022, 2023, 25 vessels at $121,000. To be clear, derelict vessel removal does not meet criteria for sorrel funding. So the motion I'm going to make here would be to reject the lagoon grant guidelines in the interest of building reserves in the beach fund for beach maintenance and repair, and to include a fiscal year 2024, 2025 allocation not to exceed $150,000 for the Brevard County Derelict Vessel Removal Program, as it does not meet the sorrel requirements. So that's the motion, I'm more than willing to answer any questions, should there be any.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobias, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Felton. Is there any discussion in regards to this issue? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, it carries. Now, here we go. County attorney, we have, did you have something, Commissioner Goodson?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. Morris, you have I-5, please?
Thank you, yes, sir. I-5 is a request to approve a settlement agreement between the county and Eric and Amanda O'Bligh. This relates to code enforcement liens that were imposed on real property on Gator Drive and Merritt Island between 2015 and 2019. The accrued amount of the fines on the six cases totaled $350,350 as of July 2021, when all related code violations had been complied. The property is since sold, property belongs to someone else. The lien amounts were transferred to a cash deposit in the registry of court that's being held by court. Recently, we mediated this case with former Judge Charlie Roberts, and I think we got to an excellent outcome. The county would receive $290,000 cash in satisfaction of the six code enforcement liens totaling $350,350.
Okay. Any discussion, any questions? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion for approval.
I'll second.
Commissioner Goodson makes the motion. Commissioner Felton seconds. There's no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Let's go to your Bros versus Brevard County settlement. Morris, please, if you would.
All right, I-6 is another settlement agreement, related property located on Merritt Island. In this case, as a result of certain code actions and other things, the county ended up owning undivided one-half interest in an 80-acre parcel of real property along with Mr. Paul Bros. Mr. Bros filed a suit to partition the property, asking the court to divide the property between himself and the county. The parties mediated this case some time ago. Once again, former Judge Crawford served as the mediator. The county agreed to a partition of the property, equitably distributing the property in another number of other terms. Subsequently, at a closed attorney-client private meeting, the Board of County Commissioners directed me to prepare a final settlement agreement consistent with the terms of that mediated agreement and bring it back. It took some time to come to an agreement on the finer points of the agreement, but we are here, and I think this is a good agreement and resolution of that case.
All right. Are there any questions? Commissioner Goodson, you ready for motion?
I'll make a motion for acceptance.
I'll second.
The motion by Commissioner Goodson, seconded by Commissioner Felton. Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. All right, we're going to 1-7, I believe, at this particular point. And that is permission to advance for public hearing on ordinance to repeal the economic development ad valorem tax exemption for BK Technologies, which failed to do the required items that they were supposed to do, from what I understand. Karen, are you handling this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item I-7 is requesting permission to advertise for public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance repealing the economic development ad valorem tax exemption for BK Technologies. If approved, the public hearing would be on May 21st.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Felton, is there a second?
Second, but a discussion, thanks.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobias. Commissioner Tobias, you have the floor.
Thank you. We always hear positives about these, so I just wanted to go through a little history here. This item is due to BK Technologies choosing not to adhere to the ordinance requirements of submitting an annual report for 2023. Two certified letters with confirmation of receipt were sent to the company. In addition to rescinding the abatement for the remainder of the eight-year term, ordinance 2019-010, it's Section 1. Item G allows the county to seek reimbursement of ad valorem taxes abated in favor of the company during the period of the company did not meet requirements of the ad valorem tax abatement program. In this case, BK Technologies, the county can seek reimbursement of $9,259. Looking back to 20, since 2018, the county has heard nine abatements. We've approved six. To be clear, only two of these six are actively receiving abatements. To make matters worse, in this same period, we've actually rescinded eight of these now, including BK Technologies. I just want to thank the board for approving, or sorry, not approving, the L-3 Harris abatement this year. We certainly had egg on our face, had we handed L-3 Harris millions of dollars in tax abatements. Right around the corner, L-3 Harris lays off 5% of its entire workforce. So again, I wanted to thank the board members that decided to not award that and be leery as we hear these in the future. So I move to grant permission to advertise for a public hearing to consider adopting of an ordinance, repeal the economic development ad valorem tax exemption for BK Technologies Incorporated. That's the motion.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobias, seconded by Commissioner Felton. Is there any more discussion? Karen, you have any more comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. We are now going to I-8. We have a couple cards on this, but it's proposed revision to board policy, citizens' process for advising the county commission. And we have no staff handling this, or is this... Mr. Tobias, okay, yeah. Got it. Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't often do this, but I'd like to thank Ms. Kristen Lordy for bringing up this policy as I'd not actually given it a look. It's BCC 95. It's good that it's being brought up. This policy has not been reviewed since 2014. As a result, I am proposing revisions to the locally originated recommendations to improve efficiency amendment to this policy to ensure that the policy mirrors the Charter Section 2.9.10 as much as possible. This is very important, as the program was approved by 73.27% of voters in 2012. So we need to effectuate their opinion through policy as much as possible. These proposed revisions originated from my office, but as they deal so closely with the Charter, I ran these suggestions through the county attorney's office to make sure that there were no legal issues. So if anything comes up and it's closely related to Charter, I may be punting it over there, so we get a legal opinion accordingly. I've made a table explaining the reasons behind the substantive changes located in the document. Please note the bottom that these revisions were suggested by the District 3 office, but reviewed by the county attorney's office for legal sufficiency. As you can see, there are other minor changes or procedural changes that you may want to ask about, but certainly we're not including in the table. I'd be more than willing to go over the individual revisions, but I believe the table does a pretty sufficient job of doing that. So with that being said, that's the reason, the rationale behind the updating of BCC 95.
Okay. Any questions or discussion or motion? We have some cards on this. Sandra Sullivan? I know you're getting more than 10,000 steps on that watch. I just know it.
No technology watch.
Okay.
Okay, Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. First of all, you know, I think the people really weighed in on the will of the people and our communication and not feeling heard, right? So there were 58 responses to this, and we encouraged better communication between the commission and the people. You do not see that reflected in this. Now, the first thing I just want to say is, after seeing this agenda item, the first thing I did was email our county manager and requested the redline version to be uploaded, which it never was. I managed to get it from somebody else, who did get it from the county, was one person. So I'll first say, a lack of transparency on this item. Because as you can see, with the redline version, almost the whole thing is rewritten. So let's talk about how this reflects some of the comments made by people. So this process is in December, when people are busy with their holidays. It's a very difficult time. It was suggested either extending it into November or January, but, or opening it up in advance to where you can put it in, and it wouldn't be considered until that time. The second one is, I had, you know, as a systems analyst, I had recommended it's a simple thing, to add a field to that Speak Up Brevard form that would allow staff to put in their comment. And then, at least then, the person making the suggestion would have an avenue to email, you know, the staff member and have a dialogue, because ideas come not from one person, but by collaboration. And then the third thing is, this one really gets me. So the language, I just want to read this. "The county manager shall schedule," and it used to be an agenda item for the Board of County Commissioners, and it used to be, say, "to consider the citizens' recommendation as practical within the period." Now it just says, "it comes to the commission for final vote." And so the other suggestion that was made by the people is to have one agenda item for all the items, which could be 50, it could be 100, it could be, that we have a workshop, that we have a workshop to where there is a dialogue, that whether it's yourselves or staff, to at least have a process to consider. But you know, the bottom line is, you guys don't want to hear from the people. I mean, it's evident coming to these meetings. You really don't care to listen to the will of the people, and I have more to say about that under public comment. Thank you.
Katie Delaney?
Good morning. My name is Katie Delaney, and I'm here to speak about the citizens' process for advising the county commission, AKA the Speak Up Brevard program. I'm opposed to this update in the policy. This program was intended to give the people a real process, to make positive change in their community. The change in this language is not citizen-friendly. For example, before the language said the citizen, the city, I'm sorry, the county manager would solicit citizen engagement, that got removed. Then, a small but mighty change was made, and it was very passive-aggressive. And the word was added courtesy, that it'll be a courtesy to open up 30 days before the cutoff. The courtesy would have been if you all would have opened it up prior to holiday season. With an election right around the corner, why update this now? Which Mr. Tobia mentioned why, and it's obvious that it was retaliatory against one of the speakers. More citizens have used this program this year than ever before, and that should be glaring to you all. That should be glaring that citizens are not being heard, and that they're using this tool to engage with you all, because emails aren't getting responded to, and it's, there's no other way for us to get our voices heard. You could have done a good faith effort and made revisions that would be more friendly to the citizens. For example, like Commissioner Goodson mentioned, we could do a workshop to speak about the proposal so that we could actually have a robust conversation around the citizens' ideas. And why not, why not just say, instead of saying, "No, this doesn't work, Mr. Abate", it would be nice if we could get the staff to speak with the citizens and say, "Hey, this isn't under our jurisdiction, but maybe we can make something else work. Obviously, the people care about this. What can we do?" You could have also advertised for free by making a post on social media announcing the program is open. That would cost nothing, and it would take two seconds, and it would show the people that you want their engagement. Instead of making positive citizen changes, you're wielding your power against the people yet again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Goodson.
Section 3A changes the annual filing date to January the 31st. Purpose is to move the time period for submission to and after the holidays. So doesn't, you said that we didn't do that for your liking?
So the reason why I don't like that change is because that pushes the whole process further another month, and the whole reason why this was done this way in January was so that it would line up better for budget season.
Okay.
That was the intent.
Okay. If it pushes it ahead a month through the holiday season, you don't like that. So would you prefer September?
In a perfect world, what I would love to see is the program be open all year, and then the, oh, hold on, but then the staff only have to look at the proposals during that month prior to January 1st.
So you would like to see staff work every day on a proposal that everybody could just hit their computer and send it in?
No, sir.
All right. You said every day.
Right. I would like the website to be open so people could send in their proposals, not that staff would have to work on it every single day. They would only have to work on it in that window.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I do have a closing one.
Yes, sir, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While everyone may not agree on these proposed changes, the revisions are intended to keep the policy the exact same as charter language that was voted, again, by 73.27% of the voters. Not one of the speakers came up today and referenced how this was in contradiction to section 2.9.10 of our charter. Had they done that, then it might be in consideration of worthy of a change. However, again, I'm trying to align our policy with, let me go with this again, this is Republicans, Democrats, and independents, 73.27% of the people out there. Again, not of the people that came up here and spoke, but of the folks that voted on this on 11/2 of 2010. So I move to adopt or propose revisions to BCC 95, the citizens' process for advising the county commission. That's the motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
There's a second. There's a motion by Commissioner Tobia, seconded by Commissioner Goodson. Is there any more discussion?
Nope.
Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now, we are going to one, are we on one nine, correct? Oh, boy. All right. Referendum regarding the establishment of a non-ad valorem special assessment municipal service benefit unit for road paving in Cape Canaveral, or Canaveral Groves, excuse me. And who is handling this? You are, okay.
The county attorney.
You and the county attorney.
Mr. Richardson, would you like to jump in first, or we have cards on this, too?
I'd be glad to, Commissioner. Item nine is a proposal. It's a request for the board to provide direction to myself and to staff regarding a potential referendum election within a subarea of precinct 102 for the purpose of paving certain county-maintained dirt roads in Canaveral Groves. What this would do, if approved, would give us direction to work with the supervisor of elections, to do what's necessary to set up the subprecinct so it would be ready for a referendum election, and for staff to more thoroughly evaluate and estimate the cost of the road paving project, evaluate financing options, and approximate the amount of the assessment upon properties within the benefit unit that would be created so that we would be able to advise the citizens prior to the referendum election on what this would cost. There's a, within the agenda package, there's a list of the unpaved roads that are the subject of this agenda item. The subprecinct that would be created would be property owners with properties that abut those unpaved roads, or would otherwise be benefited by the paving project. And if this went to referendum election, it would require a simple majority of the voters to approve the referendum. However, further action would be required from the county in the future to enact a non-ad valorem special assessment within the municipal service benefit unit that would be created.
Commissioner, approach it.
County attorney, who on the referendum would be able to vote for this item?
Any of the electors that reside within the benefit district that would be created.
So it's only for those that are affected by it that would be allowed to have an opinion on it?
That's correct.
Okay. The reason we started this is just a little bit of history. There's 82 miles of dirt roads in the county, and District One has 68.6 miles of them, or 84% of them countywide, mainly because we have a lot of rural areas. And people move in there, and they build their houses, they're nice, then we get enough houses in, and now they would like to have the roads paved in the area. Totally understand. When you move into a subdivision, those paved road fees are in the cost of the house, so that's how those are paid for. It's typically not paid with taxpayer dollars, unless there's a situation with the main road and the county has to pick it up. So for the past seven years plus, the commissioners before me, this has been a item of trying to figure out how to get roads paved for people that want them without having to make everybody in the county pay for them, because they already paid for their paved roads in their neighborhoods. So we have tried many different avenues, and we're trying different mediums. So this is an area where we get a lot of complaints from the people that live in these areas. So they've tried to go and get MSBU packets, and then nobody's had the time to go fill them out and get those petitions in. So what we thought we would try as a pilot program is to put on a ballot just for this one area, so the people who just live there can let us know if they want to pay for having them paved or not. If they come up and they, back and everybody votes no on it, then, you know, we won't mess with it. But if they do vote yes, then the county's going to find a way to help facilitate that and help to make some type of equitable payments from the homeowners to help get their roads paved. So that's primarily what this is. And Mr. Chair, I'm going to turn this back over to you.
Commissioner Goodson.
Would there be a? Prior to the vote, would they have an understanding of what their frontage would cost per foot? Is that the way it would work?
County attorney?
Yes, that's why we're bringing this action now, instead of just bringing you a resolution ready to go, because it's going to take some staff work to determine that assessment methodology. Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner, all right, well, Sandra Sullivan, you're up.
What a beautiful day.
It is, Sandra.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So this is the map that is in there, and includes down here, Osage and Angelica, right? This whole area is the taxing district area. So I want to just go back to when this first came up, which was May 4th, 2023, and it was around the time that I saw some lobbyists visiting Commissioner offices, and I had asked about what that was about, and it was about the Bright Line. It turned out to be about the Bright Line development, even though I was told by D4 that it was about borough pits. But anyway, so at the next meeting, after the idea was brought up about doing paved roads, the very next meeting was 52323 with the controversial item of Bright Line development, putting a road down through a dirt road, Osage and Angelica. And it wasn't really obvious, that was the item. Now, what I would like to see, if you're going to move ahead with this taxing district, is assurance that the stipulated agreement is being fulfilled, and that the developer of this Bright Line development, as it's referred to by District One, that they are paying, as it says, agrees to pay all the county's reasonable costs in acquiring said lands and interest in land and costs of constructing a public road access over land. So they agreed to pay, and they agreed to have an MS2TU cost, which never happened until very recently. But they agreed to pay for that cost of this new access off of Grissom Road. So I'll be doing a records request, and I would like to see a copy of the canceled check or payment made by this developer, because what it looks to me with the timing of two meetings, May 4th followed by May 23rd, is that something's being finagled here, and we're going to see, we're going to do the records request, and we're going to see whether this is trying to put this cost onto the taxpayers to cover that. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Goodson.
It, I didn't know they were back working, are they? God almighty, high tech. In reference to what Sandra Sullivan is saying, is that not the road that's north of 528 has nothing to do in this taxing district? Is that my understanding?
I believe you're correct, sir. I think those roads are already paved, and that's, we.
She's referring to the new road that's going to go from the, I guess.
To connect to Grissom?
Yes.
I don't think that'll be part of, County Attorney, this was an intent to put that in there, correct?
No, the map shows a general area, and there's a circle showing the general area, but the agenda report, if you actually read it, specifically identifies the unpaved roads that would be subject to it, and on the map, the unpaved roads, there's a key to it, and you have to read the key. But the key shows you which of those roads are dirt roadways that would be paved, and again, only property owners abutting those paved roads. And you have to go a number of streets north of Angelica or Osage before you get to the nearest unpaved road that would be subject to this MSBU. So again, the map shows a general area, but the subprecinct would only be those properties abutting one of the unpaved roads that would benefit from the project.
One other question, please.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I don't know, this might be a Frank question, I guess, or his attorney question.
You have numerous roads in this special taxing district. Would they be done over a period of five years, 10 years? Or I know you say that, how quick would you collect the taxes? I don't know.
County attorney, we were working on that data by cost. Do you have any idea on that?
So there are a few options. There's a certain, only a certain pace at which we can go with paving roads internally. We could use external contractors as well, so there are a couple options, and I think part of this action is for staff to go down, and they've done a more general assessment, but we will have a more detailed assessment of the time and costs. And by doing it on this scale and doing a number it wants, you can realize some efficiencies that if you just did one isolated road at a time, you might not, so. But you're correct, it'll take some time to do all of it. It's approximately 14 miles of unpaved roads, so it'll take a while.
Commissioner Goodson, we had you start putting so much work into this, and the county attorney's office was starting to put a great amount of time into it. So I wanted to check with the board to see what your ideas were with this, if we moved for it before I had them really start investing even more time into it.
If you approve this, we'll come back in likely May to you, the second May meeting, or maybe the first July meeting, with a lot more information and a resolution that would place this as a referendum election on the ballot.
Okay, let's go back to the cards. Orville Cox.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Orville Leland Cox. I live at 4180 Paddington Street in Canaveral Groves area. I have lived there for 33 years, since I had my house built. At that time, to my understanding, and best of my recollection, there was no paved roads anywhere, you know, maybe the, you know, the main road, Canaveral Groves Boulevard. And, but now, most of the roads are paved on the east side of I-95, the main roads. The west side, where I live, and there's a lot of houses there, are still unpaved. I believe we pay the same amount of taxes, property tax, as the people that's living on these paved roads. My question is, why should we have to pay when these other roads were paved and paid for the county, included in the property tax, as the unpaved roads? Up to three or four years ago, our roads were horrendous on the unpaved roads. After much discussion with Commissioner Pritchett arguing, begging, they did come in and build up the road base, almost all the unpaved roads. So now, I don't think that it's going to be that much cost, because the road base is there, except for the pavement. Before that, these roads were horrendous. They were this far below the, you know, like, when it rained, it was like a canal, a ditch, you know, you'd throw wakes. There again, when it's, when it's dry, then you've got the dust, you've got the washboard roads and stuff like this. It appears to me that it's just to charge an extra cost to these people that live on unpaved roads now would be basically double taxation, as we're already paying the same amount of tax as everybody else. Also, with all the new development, housing developments and everything in District One, old US1, there's another one being built, one on Canaveral Groves, it's got tons of houses, seems to me like there's a lot of tax base being added to these. And so it's just my, I would love to have the roads paved, but I don't believe that the extra cost.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Yeah, go ahead, please.
Sir, I love your community, and you're one of the people in there that I think are so incredible. So we've done a lot of work on the roads. I've heard from a lot of your neighbors that want them paved, but if you don't, just vote no, and this will completely, it's all up to you guys what you want to do by the time it gets to you. You're the only ones that'll be voting for it.
Yeah, I understand that. Some people want to live on the dirt road, I don't know why. They say because you're riding, you know, riding horses, which you can't ride horses around any, there's no trails.
Right.
So you have to haul somewhere to ride out back or whatever, and you have to haul, you know, get in the trailer and go a couple of miles to get any woods where you can ride. So that's kind of a non-issue to me. But getting back to the whole thing, is I don't believe, why should we have to pay an added tax when other people that live on these paved roads are already?
Is you guys, if you looked at your tax bill, it's only like $40 or $50 a year of your money going for the roads. And so it's already, county has to supply a lot of money to maintain them. We put a lot of money into refurbishing them for you guys, because it was a mess. But to pave them, everybody else pretty much paid for their. But to pave them, everybody else pretty much paid for theirs in other areas of the county. But I have this rural area out here that didn't, there was some tax from a couple commissioners before that, that did some of these projects, but there's no more money. So if you want them paved.
No money.
I know. So just so you know, if you want them paved, there's no money that I can find to pave them with.
But most of these rural roads are, did not have the amount of residents as this area's, like Canaveral Groves does, you know? You might have something in North Brevard for three mile road and there might be 10, 10 residents, you know? There's one road, Kumquat, that's one of the main roads.
Yeah, it is.
That's off of.
Yes, sir, but the, but on this.
And that serves, that one road serves like over 50 residents in those houses.
Yeah. But you, you vote no on this and it'll completely go away. It's just a way for you guys to have a voice if you want to do it. We just try to find a way to, to help with the process. But again, it's, it's all up to you guys what you want to do.
Yeah, if you want to pay, if you want to pay for it.
Well, every, everybody kind of does in areas.
That's my point.
Right. When I, I moved into my neighborhood, I had to pay for those roads. So I, I would love to do it if, if I could talk them into giving me extra funds just for us, but it's, it's countywide tax dollars. So that's what I, we have to try to figure out. And I've been trying for seven years to find a way to get some money up for y'all.
Many of these roads that are already paved on the east side are being repaved time and time again.
I know. They're being resurfaced because the county did that.
Resurfaced, which they didn't really even need resurfaced. So, you know, it just seems to me like there's a lot of waste that don't need to be.
Thank you, sir.
And the ones that, like myself, are being neglected.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. Craig, is it Hotling?
Hotting, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Craig.
Good morning, good morning. I actually did start the process of the MSBU and I've got a good feedback from most of the neighbors. So I can't speak for everyone, I can't speak for every, every road out there, but at least on, on our part of Calamundon, we are at the level of the 66 and two-thirds or whatever the percentage is. So I thought now would be a good time to bring it up. Some people are in favor, some aren't. But again, as far as us, it's just a concern of the vagueness of cost. We don't, I can't tell them what it's going to cost until everyone signs and we get the estimate and the bids. So that was it. Just, is it per lot? Is it per owner, right? Some people have seven acres and that only counts as one vote. Some people have two separate one acre lots. So would that person be paying twice the amount that the seven acre lot has? So just like I said, a little vagueness, everybody's unsure. I can't really give them the answers, not knowing them myself. But like I said, I did get a good response going basically door to door, gate to gate and meeting all these people. So like this gentleman, I haven't been here for 32 years, but if you go down Calamundon Avenue, it certainly needs some work. I know the graders do come and they say it's once every week or so, but we haven't seen them in three weeks. So again, just a lot of concern. We've got vehicles that are getting ruined by this. It's, it's literally a washboard for, for the entire length of the road. That's it, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
If you would just get that to my office sometimes over the next couple of days and we'll start looking at that.
Yeah.
And we will work on getting you the data with the others.
Great.
So, but thank you.
Thank you.
Candidly, I think this is an extremely creative idea that Commissioner Pritchett's come up with. So it's just giving you guys an opportunity. But Martha Ashley Mulch.
Well, there's an old saying, you can't please everybody all the time. And yes, I'm in one, the section of Canaveral Groves that's considered the forgotten area. We don't get the road maintenance that we're supposed to get. We don't get our ditches mowed and things taken care of. But I do agree that this needs to be put out there to the residents to vote on. I know personally, I, I agree with what Mr. Cox said, that the people on the, the other side of Canaveral Groves, they, they don't have to pay for their roads, their roads are already paved. And here we are still begging to get ours paved. And like someone else said, they're always repaving roads that don't really need to be repaved. So I'd like to see how they look at the money and, and how it can be adequate to help us. But one other concern I have is there's hardly any empty lots left. We're getting more and more people on that side of the groves and we still only have two ways out of there. God forbid we get another forest fire like we had in 2003. You're not going to get all those people out of there. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brad Mush. Is that how you pronounce your last name, Mush?
Mush.
Thank you.
Yes, just also wanted to hopefully suggest that we could, you could also consider putting speed bumps on sections of the roads such as Tangerine Street, which is where we live. Because that, after a couple of years ago, speed bumps were put on Cangro Street, which is north of us. So the dirt road, Tangerine Street that we live on became a bypass for people to get around the speed bumps and the traffic instantly jumped. So if you pave Tangerine Street, I'm assuming it's going to become an even more convenient bypass to get around those speed bumps on Cangro. So I'm hoping there's an option to add speed bumps on Tangerine Street if that does get paved. So it doesn't become a very convenient bypass for the speed bumps. That's all.
Thanks, sir. Clint Knowles.
Good morning, I'm a Canaveral Groves resident. Met with Pritchett four or five years ago. I think we had the county there discussing paving and the concerns. I think we all agree that this, it's a major issue. I know that during Hurricane Matthew, we had some problems with washouts and such. Concerns getting emergency vehicles in, even the school buses after the hurricane was a problem. But again, I think we all agree, this needs to happen. Coming down to the funding end of it, the majority of the roads in there are paved, particularly on the east side of the highway. Those were not done under special assessment. And then the idea of fairness and consistency, as Commissioner Tobias said, we hope that we be granted the same, that these roads get paved for the safety of the community and the folks that live out there. I know you guys have a challenging job and we appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Katie Delaney.
My name is Katie Delaney. I'm a candidate for District One County Commission and also a resident of Canaveral Groves. I truly don't have an opinion about whether or not these roads should be paved. I think that the residents should decide that's, that's a good idea. What I'm frustrated with is that there was no community conversation. Many times Commissioner Pritchett has been asked to come to the homeowners association meetings and has not come. I know from personal experience, I've had many times where I've tried to reach out and I've not gotten a response back. People are frustrated. People are frustrated. People don't know what this process is. People are, are questioning, is everyone going to have to pay this tax? Are, is it only the homes on the specific streets? When, when I reached out to my neighbors and, and the community in Canaveral Groves, I will say, most of the people don't want the paved roads. They feel like they live in Canaveral Groves for a reason, because we want, you know, to live in a rural atmosphere. The people that do want the roads, a lot of them only want it because the dirt roads have not been maintained. And just like some of the speakers talked about, that, that's a huge problem, that these roads have not been maintained. And then again, there's people who just want the roads paved. So I think it's a good idea that this goes to the voters, but I just wish that there was more transparency, more community involvement. And I find that it's ironic that, you know, Ms. Pritchett and, and Mr. Tobias, you sat and talked at the budget meeting about how, you know, the, the infrastructure, it's not your problem now, wait for the next commission. But you're going to, you know, and I was referring to impact fees and whatnot. But you're going to try to rush through paving all these roads without even having a conversation with the community? And I'm having the same people reach out to me in North Brevard and Memms and Scottsmore. They don't want it. What they want is their dirt roads maintained. So, yeah, we just need to do better. Thank you.
Commissioner Goodson.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry?
How much better transparency can you have than allow the people to vote?
I think that's a great idea, but what I think should have happened first.
Well, you said that you wanted to see more. No, you said you wanted to see more transparency.
Right.
I'm trying to ask you, what would you want to do?
Right. What I would like to see is a community conversation with the people that live there prior to having to spend the money, putting that on a ballot and putting the staff through all of that, when you could have just had a conversation with the community.
Huh. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Once again, the light system's not working, so I apologize. Just call out if you want. Commissioner Goodson, I mean Commissioner Tobias, please.
Ms. Delaney, how much is this going to cost?
I don't know. Your attorney doesn't even know.
How much is it going to cost per parcel?
Do you know that?
I do not.
Okay.
Let me, let me, let me tell you why I asked the question. Because I believe, I'll call her chairwoman because she's been chair, is going through the process. She, the reason she has brought this up and is something that she scolded me on ages ago, which was if you're going to use an inordinate amount of staff time, before you do that, please bring the issue to the board. That takes a lot of work for staff to figure out how much this is going to cost, how it's going to be divided. We don't have that information. I'm sure Mrs. Chair Pritchett would be more than willing to share the information. We had a citizen out here who said he's gone and spoken with folks, he just doesn't have it, neither do we, but this is the process that'll get us to that. We don't have that information. And, and, and normally I vote against these things, but based on the information that I've gotten from this, that, that Chair Pritchett is trying to get all of this information together to be able to present this to the citizens where they have all that information. We don't have this information. This is the steps required to get that information. To expect her to have answers before we have them is just unfair.
Nobody is expecting her to have answers. What I asked for was a community conversation.
Thank you, thank you for, thank you for your time. I, my, I will be, I will be supporting, I will be strongly supporting this.
Okay. All right, Stephen, CEO vote? Okay, there you go. Are you having fun yet, Stephen?
Absolutely.
I knew it.
And thank you, folks, for taking the time to hear me speak today. Commissioner Pritchett, I am a constituent on Banana Avenue. My wife's emailed your staff in reference to this already. We own horses. We own horses on a dirt road. We bought on a dirt road specifically so we can enjoy the pleasure of riding our horses in our community. There's been a lot of development on Banana Avenue. We've got maybe three or four lots left on Banana that can be developed on. I've been out there 12 years. This is my second time living out in Canaveral Groves. We love it out in the Groves. We moved to the Groves specifically for the dirt roads. If I wanted to live on a road that was paved, I'd have moved to Vieira. Sorry. But my question to staff and to you, Commissioner, is there are going to be folks that live on paved roads in that specified new district for voting? Or is it only going to be the folks that live on the dirt roads going to be able to cast on this ballot?
County Attorney, I believe it's just the dirt roads, correct?
Yeah, the people that runs on dirt roads.
Okay, that's fine. Again, I'm opposed to this. As other folks have stated, I don't need the new taxes. My taxes are high enough out there. I have two lots. I have two lots specifically for, for my animals. And we like it like it is. And that's, that's, you know, that's.
You've never gotten a hold of me, asked me to pave your roads, I know, so that's good.
No, ma'am. I've asked you to come grade the roads.
Yes, sir. Do that all you want to, we'll do it, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. And they do, and they, they have done better since they've raised the base.
Thank you.
I worked in the asphalt industry as a kid. It's expensive to pave roads.
It is.
And I really don't want to see that extra money. I'm retired now, my wife's getting ready to retire. And I just, for, for us, it's a bad move.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have come to the end of the cards here. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for the county attorney, if, if you guys are willing to go ahead and, and put in the time now and get us more of the specific numbers so that we can present them to the community, so they know exactly what they'd be looking at if, if they want to do this or not. And just so you guys know, if I get another windfall tax hunk of money, it's going to help with this as well, if this is what you'd like to.
I'm not certain what the motion is.
I know, I just made a messy motion. What a female. A motion to allow the county attorney to move forward in working on the information and a resolution.
I'll second that. Okay, there's a motion from Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Goodson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Motion carries. Well, you need to live, you need to live on a dirt road then. All right. Okay there, naysayer. We have board reports. Frank Abadi, county manager.
I do have a couple of items for you, Commissioners. Yesterday evening, Public Works received a request from the TPO. They are working on an accelerated grant and, and for a grant for Ellis Road. It's a multimodal project, a grant opportunity. The federal government had shifted the timeframe. It was supposed to be a couple of months later, but they've accelerated it a few months for whatever reason. And so we're looking for a letter from the chair to support the project to be sent to the Office of the Secretary of Transportation, the U.S. Department of Transportation. And I'm sending that one out and to each commissioner. The second one is a similar request for a supporting letter from the board for Palm Bay. They have an Emerson Drive project. It's for a Safe Streets for All Implementation Grant, and they received that request as well. The TPO is requesting that. We also support, the board support that. So we're looking for the chair to, you know, with board approval, to sign both of these letters of support for these grant application requests.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, you do.
Okay. We have a motion to move forward with the letters of request. And is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Felton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries. Since this kind of ties in with one of the things that Commissioner Felton was doing, I was, I'm going to ask him for his report now so that he can discuss his letter that he's got, he's proposing.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Took it upon myself to write a letter in support of Ellis Road funding that's in two different places in the budget. Governor is getting the budget soon and total is $10 million. So I thought rather than each of us trying to write a letter, I would just do one and we could give direction to the chair today to sign it and send it. I passed that out earlier. I'll read it real quick if you, if you like, but it's pretty straightforward. Yes, anybody wants to hear it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, all right. To the Honorable Governor DeSantis, thank you for your service to the people of the great state of Florida. Your steadfast leadership continues to be important to the future of Florida's Space Coast. I am writing on behalf of the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners in support of the $5,769,432 from the general fund and $4,230,568
and sixty-eight dollars from the F.DOT trust fund for the Ellis Road widening preconstruction activities currently funded in the 2024-25 budget. This road project is a top transportation priority for Brevard County. Ellis Road is a strategic connector between I-95 and the hub for aerospace, aviation, and defense contractors in Brevard County. Additionally, this appropriation will allow for right-of-way acquisition to help safeguard this project from rising inflation. This approach would reduce the overall widening construction costs in the future, accelerate the schedule, and help secure the project delivery. In brief, the Ellis Road widening project will provide a significant improvement to a critical regional corridor in Brevard County. Thank you for your consideration, Jason Steele, Chair. That's the letter. And I'll make a motion for that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Now, let me get through just a couple of last little things here. Commissioner Goodson, do you have a, a report?
No, sir.
Commissioner Pritchett, do you have a report? Morris, do you have a report?
No report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Today's a pretty brief, today is National Talk Like Shakespeare Day. The useless Florida fact, in February nineteen ninety-nine, Plant City stole the Guinness World Record for world's largest strawberry shortcake, measuring eight hundred twenty-seven point four-four square feet, weighing in at eighty-one hundred and fifty pounds from Quebec, Canada. However, the record is now being held by a city I can't pronounce in Philippines for a shortcake weighing twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirteen pounds. At least it's not in Canada's hands. This day in Florida history, in nineteen twenty-one, the Florida Legislature divided Old DeSoto County into five parts, from the counties of Hardy, DeSoto, Charlotte, Highlands, and Glades County. And most importantly, the employee recognition is Lisa Cruz. She is land acquisition specialist two in Public Works, the land acquisition office, three years of service. Lisa has over twenty years' experience in the title insurance and closing industry and she makes, and she makes her well-suited in land acquisition area. As land acquisition specialist, Lisa's job duties include negotiating with property owners for the acquisition of property, easements, and right-of-ways to support county projects. In addition, she reviews title reports, legal descriptions, and appraisals. And most importantly, she works to establish and maintain a relationship of trust and integrity with public. She's extremely dedicated to her job and county. She's always had a smile on her face and is one of the most pleasant people to be around according to those she works with. She is a ray of sunshine. Fun fact, Lisa enjoys boating, antiquing, and traveling. In fact, on one of many travels, she found herself on a cruise ship during a nor'easter. The waves were crashing over the deck, eleven of the ship, but like the trooper she is, she remained true and steady in tough times. She didn't even get seasick like most of the passengers around her. Lisa, Lisa, thank you so much for your service. You provide a very important function that most of us, most of folks in the county benefit from, but have no ideas going on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have two last comment cards from the public. Sandra Sullivan.
So over the last couple of weeks, I've been writing a lot of emails and calling the District Four office without response. We were made aware of a meeting, I was aware of this a couple of months ago, a county meeting with the, some of the residents of South Patrick Shores on the twenty-fifth of April. And since I didn't get an answer out of the District Four office, I decided to go to the Save Our Lagoon Citizen Oversight Committee on Friday. And I asked a specific question. The use of the DMAA, the watering site for the Grand Canal project, are you extending the TUA agreement to facilitate other projects? Because our community, we had a community meeting with over a hundred people present, everybody was invited, and we were told in two thousand and eighteen that this project would be only for the Grand Canal project because of the inconvenience to our community So it was flat-out stated, a misrepresentation, that this was only for the Grand Canal project. And you can review that on Waves Action. I posted a clip of that video. I think I've sent it to you via email as well. So lo and behold, yesterday, in record request, which I routinely do, I see this email, and it's an email from Salley Beach to DEP. And it says, "The biggest hurdle, that we are unable to start our project until the county is done with theirs, as we would be using the same site for the muck. At this point, the most up-to-date information is fiscal year twenty-six, before the city can start their muck removal." So in other words, the county flat-out lied to us. And further, I called Amanda Peck, who's the administrative director with that department in Florida DEP, and she confirmed the intent to use the DMAA site in South Patrick Shores. So no wonder I didn't get an answer. And I would like to say that the problem with the county is you're not, you're taxing us. We, the people, agreed to tax ourselves for the Save Our Lagoon people, and you're lying to us. I mean, the same thing for the Save the Rockledge Trees, you know, which now I understand is under initiative to reevaluate how many trees to cut down. Last time was sixty-seven. We were told it was simply a repaving project. No, because I did due diligence, I dug into it, found out they were being lied to. It was about doing a paving project. And then we got a Flamingo Road project in South Patrick Shores as well, which is another project, you're not listening to the people and you're actually going to be violating your own ordinance and cutting down trees between commercial. You guys need to rethink how you do things.
Katie, come on.
I'd like to yield my time.
I appreciate that very much, Katie. All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second? No, you guys want to do some more stuff? Okay. All right, Commissioner Felton. Commissioner Goodson moves to adjourn. Commissioner Felton, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, thank you very much.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.